City School Board of Education open. Mr. Frazier, would you please give the roll call?
Mrs. Baker?
Here.
Mrs. Matthews?
Here.
Dr. Kopus?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Just for a moment, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Holbrook for a few items that's not on the agenda, sorry.
Yes, earlier this week, we lost a beloved member of our Hamilton community and Mr. George Johnson passed away. And George was 90 years old, but George graduated from Hamilton High School in 1952. Attended Ohio State University, got his law degree from UC. But George's work was really within the city of Hamilton in the fact that he was an attorney for 55 years in this city, he was a city council member for 10 years, and he served as a board member on the Hamilton City School Board for 32 years. He was really instrumental in the fundraising and building of Virgil Swarm Stadium over at the high school, and he was also heavily involved in the building of our eight new elementary buildings in 2008, 2009. I knew George well, and, you know, I know he was a proud alumnus of the Ohio State University, and actually was the president of the Ohio State University Presidents' Club and the Ohio State University Butler County Alumni Club for many, many years. Passionate supporter of high school athletics, and it's extremely fitting that last November we were able to have his family here to give him a lifetime award for his contributions, not only to the district and to the community. I'll remember Mr. Johnson as a tremendous resource of knowledge for myself coming to Hamilton 10 years ago, but probably more importantly, he was a friend of mine. And so what I'm requesting is a moment of silence tonight in honor of Mr. Johnson. Thank you, President Baker.
You're welcome. Next on the agenda, I believe, Mr. Wright, we have some important recognitions.
Third time's a charm. In Ohio, we celebrate military families and veterans during each November. The Ohio School Boards Association, along with school districts across the state, like to recognize staff who have served in the armed forces. We are fortunate enough this evening to have a military veteran on our school board, so I would like to ask Dr. Kopus to please join me as we recognize these individuals in our staff who have served. So, Dr. Kopus, if you would come, I'm going to have you help hand out certificates.
I want to thank you very much.
So, we have two individuals who are actually here this evening that we're going to recognize first, and then I have a number of names that I'm also going to read of individuals who were not able to attend, but we want to recognize them as well. So, if the two individuals would actually step forward when I call your names, Angela Henson and Robert Philpott. We want to take just a moment to recognize you with another round of applause for the time that you've served in giving to this community, to this country, and really appreciate being able to recognize you this evening. Thank you. I do also want to recognize the other individuals, and I know this is not an exhaustive list. The way that we compiled this was we sent out a survey to all district employees. So, I do want to recognize the employees who responded to that survey by just reading their names here briefly. Amy Newman, Carol Carlisle, Charles Roberson, Craig Short, Dalton Stonecypher, Danny Harris, Dave Graffner, James Platt, Jason Hage, Marilyn Tebby, Patricia Iderton, Randall Mincher, Rick Phillips, Raymond Ortiz, and Tim Arthur. So, let's give them all a round of applause. Again, we want to thank all of our military veterans, whether their names were read tonight or not, in our community, in our schools, and across the country for the sacrifices that they made to, you know, give their time and their effort, some not too long ago and some long ago, but we do want to appreciate them and thank them for everything that they've done for our country.
Very nice.
Also add, I believe, on Monday, there was quite a few at all the elementary schools and then throughout the whole school recognizing veterans.
Yeah, that's a big day for many of our schools, and there's a lot of planning involved in that, and there are tremendous activities throughout the district on Monday. So, this is in addition to that.
On behalf of the board, thank you. Thank you to everyone for your service to our country. We really appreciate it.
Mr. Holbrook and President Baker, I just want to say, on Monday, I attended the event at Garfield, and I just want to publicly recognize Principal Marjum. What a wonderful show that was, and I just appreciate that, and I just want you to know that you and your staff did a great job, so thank you for that.
Great. All right. Oh, yes, sir.
Yes, the veterans say things. It's great to recognize the staff like myself. It also has a profound effect on our students, in my opinion. Creates future veterans.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anything else? Next, I believe, Ms. Sorrentino?
Yes, we have some recognitions tonight with our secondary counselors, and Alex Sorrentino is going to take it from this point to recognize those.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thanks so much, and thank you for giving me the time to briefly, I promised briefly, recognize the amazing group of professionals sitting behind me here. As part of my job responsibilities, and really one of my biggest privileges, is the ability to, in part, support some of the amazing work that they do every day in our schools. Most recently, we've begun to kind of strive for a closer alignment to the American School Counselor Association national model. Part of that is joining with the, what we call, OSC, which is what's on your agenda today, and that's the Ohio School Counselor Association Accountability Report. So, each one of the teams that sit behind me completed this report, but the report is not the thing that's special. The work that goes into the report is what is really astounding. I'm going to high-level fly by what those things cover, just so you can know how all-encompassing and what masterful multitaskers all of these professionals are to really daily make a difference in our students' lives. Each and every model that they submitted highlighted their leadership and advocacy through improving school climate and safety, ensuring that each student knew that there was at least one adult in the school that they could talk to if they need support. And then each building also focused on building specific goals that highlighted the ASCA domains of academic, career, and social-emotional growth. The academic focuses focused on goals such as math growth, scheduling students with a purpose to make sure that those who needed extra support could continue to get that in secondary buildings, and also focusing on classroom support lessons specifically to those in jeopardy of not graduating, to give those students every chance to be successful. Career focuses, different buildings had goals that included tailored experiences to the Butler Tech Career Lab, increasing information on career path and college pathways, and also coordinating future planning and college visit days, which are huge events at the high school. Finally, the social-emotional goals included focuses providing individual supports to students and also referrals to tiered support services requested by both students and families throughout the year. These professionals are really the conduits to our community supports and agencies in the community, and they provide hope when families are in distressing moments. So, I want to ask each of you guys to come up when I call your name, and if we can, have your principals join you so that we can have the groups who really support our kids up here and be recognized individually. I'm going to start with Garfield Middle School, led by Principal Marjum, and Laura Hoard and Kristy Riddle. Thank you. I didn't give them instructions before this. Next, I have Wilson Middle School, led by Jesse Wiseboro and accompanied by School Counselors Linda Millholland and Kristy Riddle, or, I'm sorry, Kristy Snyder. I'm sorry, Kristy. Next, I have the Hamilton Freshmen or FC campus. Mr. Smallwood is here to collect the awards for his staff. Amy Byges has jury duty today, and Stephanie Belsher is taking her daughter on a college visit. And last but certainly not least, I have Hamilton High's main campus. John Zary is here with his team, Britton Clark, Lisa Caudill, Kelsey Heager, Kristy Marjum, Sarah Welty, and Megan Wheat. Thanks so much for giving a brief moment of time to highlight all their amazing work.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you all for making, doing the extra, going the extra mile to help our kids and families. It's very much appreciated and very proud of all of you, so thank you.
President Baker, can I make a comment real quick?
Yes.
Don't undersell the impact that each of you make on students every day. Over my 37-year career, the differences in student need, the differences in family need, the differences in understanding academic need has shifted tremendously, and each one of you make a significant difference every single day with our students, and I think that's really important. Every time that I'm in the buildings, there are students in your offices, and you're working with them, and sometimes those are trying situations, and, you know, your patience and your willingness to do that is not unnoticed, and I want to personally thank you for that. Our families and our kids are really, really benefiting from it, so thank you.
May I say something?
Sure.
If that's okay.
Sure.
Okay. I think this is the first time I've ever been at a board meeting where we've recognized counselors. Am I correct on that? I mean, most of you have never been here before, so that's, but that's okay. But, over the years, as an educator and as an administrator, I did elementary, I did secondary, all that, the counselors were the backbone that kept everything else going. And I'm, and you guys just don't get the recognition you deserve because you're not only dealing with their students at the basic level of just helping them get through a day, but also helping them plan for their futures. And I can't think of a more important role in the schools other than, you know, part of the team, but a very important role in helping students as they move forward. I just want to thank you for your hard work. I had three boys come through the schools, and the counselors were the ones that really helped them develop their life path. Where are they going? How did they get there? I also want to thank, especially at Hamilton High, I want to thank you counselors who help students with their grants, for their applications, especially the community foundation and the scholarships. That takes a lot of work. That's a lot of hard work, and I'm very intimately aware of that. But thank you so much for all you do at the secondary level. It's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Holbrook and President Baker, I have a comment also, and I actually mentioned this to Alex before the board meeting this evening. I'm speaking to the counselors. I've said on a number of occasions, the three most influential people in my life were, in all three from the Hamilton City School District, two teachers and a counselor, and they are in a very large way to blame for who I am and what I am today. So, I just ask you, please, never forget the unbelievable impact and influence that you have on young people, and how you can mold them, and what you can mean to them in their lives. So, I truly appreciate what you're doing, and I just wish you continued success.
Matthews, anything?
Thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate you. Thank you for coming and allowing us to recognize you on such a huge success that's reflective of our district and our, and as always, our children will be the one that will be the benefactors of it. So, thank you for all your hard work.
Okay. Thank you all. You're welcome to stay if you want. It's such an exciting meeting, I know, so...
They want my ear, Highland.
I know. We want to hear from Mr. Britton. Thank you all. Thank you.
Oh, no. Hey, I appreciate everything.
Thanks for your service.
Yep.
We really do have a lot of exciting things to share. They'll have to check out YouTube and Facebook to see all the great things we have going on at Highland. Let's see if technology's on our side today. Oops. I had it all set up before they left. I think it scared it away. Let's see. I apologize. Well, thank you for having us this evening as I'm pulling this up. We have a phenomenal team with us tonight, really part of our leadership team here at Highland. And as I pull this on up, we each have a part to play within our growth here at Highland, and I want to celebrate and highlight all of those pieces here tonight, and hopefully... There we go. Now, you can see all those fantastic things that we're excited to talk about. But I do want to thank the school board, President Baker, Vice President Matthews, Dr. Kopus, and Mr. Sprague, as well as Superintendent Holbrook, Mr. Wright, Mrs. Blevins, and Mr. Frazier for having us here this evening. As I said, you know, we at Highland are heroes for all of our students, and that is our theme this year, and we continue to work together to align all of our arrows, as Mrs. Blevins always says, in our goals, with the district, and to grow our supports with students with that highest rigor met with the highest support possible. Since day one, back in August, we have focused on our mission for our students, specifically increasing growth and achievement, ensuring all of our teachers are implementing district curriculum with fidelity, both in academics and with behavior, continuing to support and grow our PBIS, or Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, within all three tiered levels, improving our MTSS, or Multi-Tiered Systems of Supports process, to really look at data. What is it telling us about our students, and where do we need to pivot or help continue to support? And, of course, improving our data literacy with staff and connecting with our community. Here tonight is part of our fantastic team, our Assistant Principal Ellie Lawson, our literacy coach, Megan Wagonfield, our math coach, Becca Ware, and our Student Family Support Specialist Amanda White, who will all have a piece to share tonight, how they are impacting and growing towards these goals. But at the end of the day, it's really all about our kids. My goal and our goal tonight is for you to see how our district goals and focus align with our Highland and building goals and focus. I'd like to turn it over to Megan Wagonfield, who's going to talk to us about one of those ways that we're working to grow all of our students and increase achievement at Highland.
Hello, everyone. I'm here today to talk about something we added to our instructional minutes this year. We added what we call the win block. And so, win block stands for what I need. So, what this is, is a 30-minute time of our day, every day, five days a week, where we give an opportunity for students to work on the literacy skills they need to become successful readers, writers, and thinkers. All grade levels have their own designated win block time, where we stop all of our Tier One instruction in order to provide both intervention and enrichment opportunities. Each student has a targeted instructional ELA focus, which has been identified through our Amplify Benchmarking data. We consistently progress monitor in order to be responsive to our students' needs. We identify who is responding to the intervention we're providing, and then we plan a way to pivot when kids are not responding to the intervention. Our win block requires an all-hands-on-deck approach, so we have classroom teachers, Title One teachers, intervention specialists, and even our educational assistants kind of plug in and help our kids to grow and achieve. And we're excited to share that just in a short amount of time, we've seen some tremendous growth. We have kids that are surpassing their middle-of-year goals, and they're advancing on to more difficult or advanced skills in their intervention block. So, now I'm going to turn over to my coaching partner, Becca Ware, and she's going to talk about how explicit instruction is really improving our students' growth and achievement.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to spend a little time talking about explicit instruction. Explicit instruction is a teaching method that uses clear, direct explanations and modeling to help all students learn new concepts and skills. Sorry, got to put the glasses on, everybody. During opening day meetings, explicit instruction was introduced as a key focus for both the district and the school. Extended-day meetings, as well as building PD days, have been used to define what explicit instruction is, as well as how our teachers can incorporate the strategies into their already rigorous curriculums, regardless of grade level or content area. In our instructional committee meetings, we've not only modeled good teaching strategies to our teachers, but also give teachers the charge to share those strategies with team members and use the strategies in their own classrooms. That's the goal, right? To make it grow in our building. Through our instructional walkthroughs, we're able to see explicit instruction in action. We're able to collect data on instructional practices and help support teachers in our grade-level team meetings. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Amanda, who's going to speak to how explicit instruction also support our student behavior. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. So, PBIS, or Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, are well-established at Highland. We recently learned that Highland has received the Gold Award of Recognition from the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce for the third year in a row, which I think really highlights the fidelity of implementation and our staff's commitment to tiered levels of supports for all of our students. So, our building leadership team gives explicit expectations with our teachers about what their role in PBIS is, and each room has a dedicated time to focus on explicit teaching of expectations. We have a monthly committee that's made up of representatives from each grade level that drives the decisions about what that looks like, and the explicit teaching occurs within the classrooms at a scheduled time each week, with reteaches occurring as needed. That teaching is also reinforced by Mrs. Lawson and I on our video morning announcements on Fridays. And at the beginning of the year, that looks like teaching our expectations of personal responsibility, respect, integrity, determination, and empathy, and what those things look like in different areas of the building, like the classroom or the cafeteria. And then it transitions into lessons from the Second Step program. Second Step is an evidence-based social-emotional learning program that teaches explicit skills like how to pay attention, how to set an appropriate goal, and how to use helpful thoughts to encourage yourself if you make a mistake. And the needs of our kids are continuing to evolve and change, but so are our practices. And at Highland, we really see the connection between students having the skills taught through PBIS and Second Step, and their achievement in academics and later in life. I'm going to turn it over to Ellie Lawson to talk about how we meet the needs of students who need additional supports beyond that explicit Tier One instruction. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon/evening. So, just like Amanda stated, at Highland, we know that with our strong Tier One instruction, the general instruction, that about 80% of our students should respond and grow to that. But we also know that there are students who need that extra support and aren't going to respond. So, we, through our MTSS process, have worked to make sure that we are giving those students who need that extra support the support that they deserve and need. So, our MTSS process, so it stands for Multi-Tiered Systems of Supports, so it's monthly grade-level meetings. It involves our entire Highland team. So, we have our preschool teachers all the way to sixth grade, and it includes classroom teachers, intervention specialists, our English as second language teachers, everybody who basically needs to support that student or is a stakeholder in working with that student. They work to support students based on their individual needs, looking at assessment data. So, we're using our win block time, like Ms. Wagonfield discussed, and using that time to support our students with those regular, frequent interventions, and then we're looking at their assessment progress to see, are they growing or are they not? So, each year, our process gets better. This past year, we were listening to our staff feedback, and we were able to streamline our process to ensure we're making the most of our time, that everyone gets their voice heard. That was an issue that we have had in the past, is just not enough time for us to talk. And then also focus on solutions for our students. So, now we have clear processes, clear next steps, and everyone knows what to expect when they come to these meetings. So, in previous years, like I said, we spent a large amount of time, we didn't get enough time to talk, but we spent a lot of our time talking about the concerns for the student, and that was basically the whole meeting. You know, here are our concerns for why this student is not growing. So, the way that we have pivoted this year is student concerns are submitted ahead of the grade-level meetings a week before. So, that way, all stakeholders who are working with that child or maybe need to work with that child can look at that student's intervention data, kind of ask the classroom teacher the questions that they need to ask, and then come prepared to that meeting so that we can come up with a plan moving forward, and not spend so much time kind of admiring the concerns, but spend more time focusing on solutions for the students. So, through our MTSS process, we are continuing to grow in our comfortability with data. It's not a bad word anymore. We feel comfortable talking about it. We're getting there, and we are working our way to making sure that all of our staff are data literate. So, I'm going to hand that over to Mr. Britton, who's going to talk about how we are increasing our data literacy. Thank you.
So, as a building and staff, as I said, we continue to grow in our data literacy with a renewed focus this year on the fidelity of our instruction and the collection of our data. What are data's really saying about our students and our instruction, and guiding our future instruction and supports to ensure that, ensure all of our learners grow both in academics and socially? Highland has that continued focus this year to understand, analyze, and communicate with the data, and we know that improving our data literacy at Highland helps us to make better decisions for our students, for our instruction, and for our tiered supports for everyone, and to use those decisions to convey that value to others. It includes understanding the data we're collecting, the quality and analysis, really thinking critically about that, and understanding how we can apply that to our future for our students. Through our staff PDs, we've also spent a chunk of time looking at our Ohio State Report Card data and figuring out each person and how they play a role in that data getting reported to the state. As we become more literate and more data literate as a team, we want to apply not only our instructional focus, but understanding how So through our MTSS process, we are continuing to grow in our comfortability with data. It's not a bad word anymore. We feel comfortable talking about it. We're getting there, and we are working our way to making sure that all of our staff are data literate. So I'm going to hand that over to Mr. Britton, who's going to talk about how we are increasing our data literacy. Thank you.
So as a building and staff, as I said, we continue to grow in our data literacy with a renewed focus this year on the fidelity of our instruction and the collection of our data. What are data's really saying about our students and our instruction, and guiding our future instruction and supports to ensure that all of our learners grow both in academics and socially? Highland has that continued focus this year to understand, analyze, and communicate with the data. And we know that improving our data literacy at Highland helps us to make better decisions for our students, for our instruction, and for our tiered supports for everyone, and to use those decisions to convey that value to others. It includes understanding the data we're collecting, the quality and analysis, really thinking critically about that, and understanding how we can apply that to our future for our students. Through our staff PDs, we've also spent a chunk of time looking at our Ohio State Report Card data and figuring out each person and how they play a role in that data getting reported to the state. As we become more literate and more data literate as a team, we want to apply not only our instructional focus, but understanding how that is reported through our Ohio State tests, through our ALPAs, through our RIMPs, and everything that they take into account when they look at our building and our district. Many of our extended day meetings have been designated to understanding that process, the components that go on in, and how each staff has a direct impact in that reported data, and the lens that we work together through to continue to grow our students academically and show growth for all. In line with our academic alignment and professional growth, we also strive to continue at Highland to grow our positive building relationships with students, our colleagues, our families, as well as our community. So as you know, Highland prides itself on connecting with our families and community. And I just want to take a moment to share two really great things that have happened so far with our Highland staff, our students, and community. First being Just a Pair of Shoes. So Just a Pair of Shoes is an Ohio-based nonprofit organization focused on having kids have a boost of confidence and feeling connected. So we partnered with them, Kettering Health, The Bangles, in our Highland team, and we were able to give 120 of our kids a brand-new pair of shoes and a day that they will never forget. Eric All, who's a former Hamilton City student, Chase Brown, and others, including Who Day, were there to play with our kids, to interact and build community. And we were also able to partner with our high school, with Mr. Zary and others, where 83 of our high school students came and were mentoring our students along the way, and we hope to continue that partnership and mentorship. We also had our Hispanic Heritage Month, a whole month of celebrations. And as the magnet school for our ESL students on the west side of Hamilton, it is really important to celebrate and to show how proud we are of all of our students' backgrounds and their nationalities through our Hispanic Heritage Month, as well as our Hispanic Heritage Night. We have eight languages that are non-English that are first languages in our homes, and it is really important for us to connect with our families and continue to build that relationship. Families were encouraged to bring a dish that was from their home country and share that. Mr. Marjoram gave us that idea from his past experience, and it was incredible. The families were connecting, they were talking, they were really building those relationships with each other, and throughout everyone who was there for that event. It just celebrates that wonderful tapestry that we have at Highland with our entire community of students. Beyond just those two events, we have our grandparents and VIP Day coming up next Tuesday, where we'll welcome nearly 1,000 community members into our building. We had a walk and roll to school event. Thank you, Mrs. Blevins and Mr. Holbrook, for attending that this year. And we were able to go into all five of our neighborhoods that feed on into Highland, which was in addition to years past. We have visits from the Cincinnati Playhouse in the park, increasing our local partnerships with Y-Base and the Boys and Girls Clubs. We have our homecoming parade, hydroponics teams, continued partnerships throughout the community. There's a lot going on at Highland, and we are just so proud of everything happening and being able to not only bring community members into the building, but at Booktoberfest and other events, we go out into the community and spread that wealth and really bring all of the goodness happening inside our buildings out into Hamilton. So once again, I want to thank you, the school board. I want to thank our Board of Education, our student, staff, and families for an incredible year, and I'm so thankful to be able to be here with this incredible team and representing everyone at Highland to share all the great things happening at Highland Elementary School. We couldn't do it without your support, so thank you so much.
Mr. Britton, I remember when you first went to Highland, and you continue to exude energy and your leadership, and you can tell that with your numbers and your team. And I just want to thank you, and you're so devoted to getting out into the community. I was on vacation this year for your walk, so I wasn't able to do it, but I will next year.
Yes.
But thank you, and thanks to your team for all you do for our kids.
Thank you.
Maggie, you took the words out of my mouth. I was going to say, you always are so excited whenever you present and talk about the school and all the great things that you and your team have accomplished. And so, you know, that's just not just to put on, that's, you know, even seeing you in the building and interacting, you're always excited about, you know, what you're doing, what's next, and I always got something exciting to share. And thank you always for sending out invites for us to come in and take a peep inside of, you know, what you guys do every day, for us to be able to come in momentarily to be able to, you know, be a part of that. So your excitement is contagious, and I know, you know, social media could be a blessing and a curse, but when I do see them talk about the schools on social media, it's always so cool, they speak so highly of, you know, "Oh, my kids go to Highland, what do you think about this?" "Oh, Highland's a great school." And I'm always like, "Yes, it is."
Thank you.
I can for once hit the like button or the heart button. So I'm like, "Yes, it is a good school, and they have a great presence." So it's just so great to see those positive, because you know, social media can run you through the wringer. So again, thank you so much, you and your team, for, you know, having such a great, great environment at the school and doing such great things, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Britton, I just want to echo what I heard down there, but I feel like I'm in another country.
Yeah, you're kind of like...
But anyway, but it's always interesting to me when I see teams coming in from their different schools and how you're focusing on children where they are. I love this win, this win block. Is that like we used to do, drop and read or something like that? Is this a whole school that happens at one time, or is this a grade level thing?
Yeah. It was an initiative brought by our instructional team and Mrs. Blevins. Other schools call it aim block. We call it win block. Of course, we read an article and we loved that "what I need." So we stop everything, but kindergarten has a designated 30 minutes, then we move on over to first grade, second, and third. And then we really wanted to be responsive to our fourth, fifth, and sixth grade data, as well as those in units in preschool, to figure out, let's let the data guide where those supports are. And it was very evident that we needed to stop in those grade levels too for 30 minutes and just flood it with support. So I appreciate that support from the board, bringing those ideas and direction, and for the team really digging on in to give that to our students.
That's great, and I'm sure you're going to see some tremendous growth on that, right? The second thing is, and I am so glad you brought up the Gold PBIS, because I had someone talk to me from another district, and they said, "Our school just got a Gold PBIS. Does Hamilton have any of those?" I go, "I don't know if we have any of those."
We got one.
I'm sure we have one someplace. So would you just spend a second on what qualifies you as a Gold PBIS? Because I do understand that this is a major award for a school. I mean, it's pretty cool.
So actually, next Thursday, we're presenting at the Regional State PBIS Conference to share with other schools to continue to grow those practices. So we are one of, I believe, 38 schools in the entire state of Ohio that are recognized as a Gold Award school. It takes a team, and it takes everybody, but it highlights all the areas of support. So tier one with Second Step, every student's getting that once a week in the classroom. Tier two would be who else needs a little extra support, whether that's small group support, whether that's checking in and out with a mentor within the building daily or weekly. And then tier three would be individual support, students that need specific individual support to support their emotional and behavioral regulations, and just to be able to function and just be themselves at school. And it does feed directly into everything that we do. As Mrs. Blevins always says, we align our arrows, but our PBIS and MTSS really go hand in hand to look at the whole rounded student and make sure that we're growing. It is also like a 78-page document that Mrs. White spends a lot of time on to give to the state, but it really celebrates all that our students are doing and all that our teachers are doing to support our students.
That's great. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Sprague and Ms. Baker, if I could add, if you want to know anything about PBIS, there is somebody here who didn't recognize herself that recognized others. And Ms. Sorrentino actually started the PBIS process at Highland.
Okay.
When they were first named as a bronze, is that right? Bronze.
Yep.
PBIS school, and then they've continued to do better and better each year to get to that gold standard.
Is Highland the only building in Hamilton that's got this? I mean, 38 out of, I can't even...
There are many schools that are at varying levels of that award. There are several schools that have gotten bronze and silver, so bronze celebrates that rich tier one. Silver does tier one and tier two, but we are all working towards rich three tiers of support. And we are very lucky to partnership with Wired2Bloom as well, with three full-time counselors within our building, which enhances that support tremendously.
That's incredible. You have counselors.
And Mrs. Sorrentino leading the charge as well. And always, we meet monthly with our partners and Mrs. Sorrentino and our team here as well, to really critically look at who needs what supports, and if we don't have it in the building, we're going to seek it out and find that.
Great. Thanks, guys. Appreciate all your hard work. That's great. I wish I had had that sense.
You can come over anytime.
Principal Britton and Vice Principal Lawson and staff, again, congratulations on the PBIS award. That's truly outstanding. And I have to say, your enthusiasm for your building is so appealing that I'm going to put an application in with Mr. Wright to see if I can get a job there. I mean, it sounds like a great place to work. And you've answered... You've already answered part of my question about the win block, as to who thought of that and where you got that idea, but was that difficult to implement in your building?
Oh, heavens, no. The supports that we have been building the last several years, well, I will say that, Mrs. Wagonfield has a critical eye on that. But really, it's looking at everything that we were already doing for students. It's not about working harder, it's about working smarter and really making sure that we're using data to guide where we're going. And everyone was on board with the fact, we're going to help our students in Highland. Our staff, I will stand by this forever, but they care so deeply about growing each and every one of our students, that it was easy to get them on board. I'm thankful that the data is showing that it's working and successful, so we can continue to pull in that right direction with staff and with our students, but it is really critically important. We know where our students are at, and we're not just looking a couple months at a time with data, but we're looking weekly for those who are two or more grade levels behind. And then we increase that progress monitoring out to two, three, or six weeks, depending on where they're at on the continuum.
Well, congratulations on your success, and please continue.
Absolutely. Yep.
Mr. Britton.
Yes, sir.
This is my 10th year in Hamilton, and I've had the opportunity to work with you as a teacher, as an assistant principal, and now as a principal. And one of the things that I don't want to understate is, over those last 10 years, we have worked as a district and you have worked in various degrees really hard on using data and using growth as metrics to improve student performance. And that has been a large, you know, a large hill to climb in the fact that using the data to determine our next steps was very difficult. And the reason for that is, what's the data mean? That took a step. Our teachers and our administrators have worked really hard. I think we're past that point now. We know what the data means. Now, what do you do with the data to improve? That's the hardest part. You talked about your win structure. And structures are great, and we can sit all day and build structures. It's all about the people. If you've got great structures and you have people that aren't willing to commit to it, you've got a structure. And in your building, your enthusiasm and leadership, along with your entire team there, has set the tone for the building. It sets the tone, good or bad. It sets the tone. And you've set a tone of, we want to look at data, we want to look at growth, we're going to have a little fun. And, you know, I think that's one of the reasons that you're seeing some of the results that you are. I also had the opportunity to come over to the Just a Pair of Shoes activity, and I maybe took something a little different from that. Everybody was enamored by seeing professional football players and that, and that's one piece of it. Our high school students over there, serving as mentors, and those young kids, seeing those high school students there, the opportunity for our high school kids to be mentors, the opportunity for our young people to see what they can become. That's what I took more from that than anything else, and just watched the interactions. And I thought it was tremendous, and I thought it was a tremendous opportunity that you gave the high school, but it was also a tremendous opportunity for some of our, you know, young adults at the high school to be mentors for our kids. And I want to congratulate you on that, because I think we need more opportunities like that. Those kids learned as much that day with that activity as they would have missing maybe a portion of a class. That was an activity that not everything that we do is learned inside the scope of four walls. And I think that's a perfect example of how we can continue to have those activities that help students grow, not only academically, but emotionally, socially, you know, all of those things are really important. So I want to compliment you and your staff on putting that together, and hopefully for years to come, that'll be something that we continue to build on.
Absolutely.
But thank you, thank you for everything.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now, I find it interesting that Jeremy said everybody was here for his report, and now everybody's gone.
Happens every year. Every year, we get a full house, and then somehow, by the time I, it's time for me to present, there's nobody left, so.
Yes. It's that stimulating five-year forecast that we have to... Very important, though. I'm really, I don't want to make light of it.
We'll pull this up here, and we'll get going.
Bye. Bye-bye. Thank you.
Okay. Well, it is that time of year again. It is forecast time, so we will get right into it. We're going to cover a few things this evening. We're going to talk about what is the forecast, why do we have one, what do we use it for? We're going to talk about what are our categories of revenue and expense, where do we get our dollars, how do we spend those dollars? And this is a forecast, so we're going to be making some assumptions with those revenues and expenditures, and look at those trends throughout the forecast period. And then at the end, I've got a couple new slides this year that are going to show some financial condition elements that we're going to look at, so. So what is the forecast? Forecast is, it's a snapshot financial analysis that we're required to do twice a year. We do once in November, and then we do a follow-up in May. And it's only looking at the general fund. So the school district has many different funds. We have capital improvement funds, debt service funds, food service funds, we have state and federal grants, but we're only talking about the general fund. That's our operating fund, it's our largest fund. And we pay most folks salary and benefits out of there, we pay utilities, bus fuel, school supplies, those types of things, out of our operating account. And when we're talking about the forecast, it's not just five years, it's actually an eight-year period of time, where we've got three years of history and five years of projections, where the first projection year is the current year we're in, which is fiscal year 2025. So what is the purpose of the forecast? Why do we have one? Well, the first purpose is to engage the Board of Education in long-range planning and let the community know about any financial issues facing the school district. It also allows me, as the treasurer, to sign what's called a 412 certificate. And basically, that just means we have enough money in reserves to meet our financial obligations. The forecast also allows the Auditor of State to find schools that may be in financial distress and help them on a better path forward. But what we really use it for is a management tool for long-term planning. We have weekly cabinet meetings Monday morning, and during those meetings, we have discussions that inevitably, those discussions have a financial impact, whether it's a cost-saving measure or something that we're going to do extra that's going to cost money. And what we will do is, we'll perform a cost analysis, and we'll take those numbers and throw them through the forecast software, and that allows us to know the impact of that decision in our long-term financial planning. So we use it constantly. So where do we get our money in the general fund? 76% of the money we get in the general fund comes from the state, and we get that via payments twice monthly through our state foundation, and that's, you'll hear me refer to the Fair School Funding Formula, that's how we get those dollars in. 20% of our general fund revenues come from local property taxpayers, and 4% of our general fund revenues is categorized as all other, which in there is interest income, various reimbursements... income, various reimbursements, the largest of which is Medicaid reimbursements that we get.
Mr. Fraser, just a quick question on the amount of funding. Has that changed? I know it's always leading to state funding, but is it, has it, has there been somewhat of an uptick in local taxes from property?
Absolutely. And we, we have assumptions based on that, and we'll get into that. But basically, the way the state sees us is, as local property taxes increase, the state gives us less money in our state foundation. So we're, and we're going to see a revenue line item that looks pretty darn flat, and that's one of those contributing factors. So absolutely. So where do we spend our, our general fund dollars? Well, just like any school district, the bulk of the, the expenses are personnel costs. So salary and benefits, which is, accounts for eighty-three percent of our general fund expenditure. Fourteen percent are categorized as purchased services, and those are things like utilities and special ed contracts. And then three percent are categorized as all other, and those are things like supplies and capital. We would, those would be categorized as like school supplies and bus fuel out of, out of that expenditure.
Another question.
Yes.
Sorry.
No, you're good.
Under the benefits category, I think you and I have had discussions in the past. Have we, it's the Butler Plan that does the benefits, is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Have we looked at that again, as far as whether they are giving us the best bang for our money?
Correct, yes. We, that's something that we do every year. And we have assumptions in the forecast based on market rate for Cincinnati, which we've been well within. We actually have a historical graph that I can share with the board of where we've been with Butler Health Plan versus the Cincinnati market. And we're still coming out way ahead on BHP, so.
Sometimes you go along and you've got the same group that's helping you, and then, you know, sometimes it's good to, like, check on them, make sure that they're doing.
Correct, correct, correct. And you'll, and you'll see that assumption here in just a second when we get into the expenditures. But that's something that we allow for, absolutely. So with, you know, with any forecast, there's going to be a lot of unknowns out there. And because there are unknowns, we have to make assumptions about our revenue streams and what we're spending our money on. So on the revenue side, we have property taxes, like we just talked about. We are assuming and projecting that property tax revenue is going to increase. Now, we don't have the thirty percent increase that we've had in the past in there, but we have a nominal property tax increase in there. We are assuming the continuation of the funding formula with the biennium coming up in FY twenty-six and twenty-seven, and then twenty-eight, twenty-nine. So we actually have two bienniums out there that we are projecting the continuation of this formula, and all signs indicate that that's what's going to happen. And within that formula, we are projecting that we're going to get base cost increases in two of those four years. That's, that's current legislation, and that's what we're projecting moving forward. We are still projecting an enrollment decline. However, we've modified that a little bit, and I've got a slide that, that will show that. And we're also projecting a lower amount of other income. And like I said, the, the major part of that is interest income, and we know the Fed's starting to cut rates, so that is affecting the level of interest that we can get moving forward. So on the expenditure side, our negotiated agreements run out during this forecast period, so we have to account for that. We've talked about healthcare. I have put in eight to ten percent, which is the, the market rate. BHP may beat that, or it may come in a little higher, but that's what the Cincinnati market right now is commanding. And then, we've talked several times as a board, the increased needs for ESL and special ed. So we have allocated for increased cost in those two areas as well.
Jeremy, when you're talking healthcare, you talk, when you said eight to ten percent, is that per year?
That's correct.
Not, not just over like two or three?
Not, not over the forecast period, no.
That's what I was afraid of.
Yeah. So what's that mean? This year's the first year of our projection period. So it looks like we're going to bring in about one hundred and fourteen million and spend about one hundred and fifteen million. So what that means is, we, we currently have a deficit spend now. So you can see what that does in year one of the projection, with relatively flat revenues projected and increasing expenditures. And the next slide will show what that looks like over time. So on this slide, we have revenue compared to expenditures, and the blue line's revenue, the yellow line is expenditures. And I've got a note down here, from 2025 to 29, we're only expecting revenues to increase by a little more than half a percent. And there's, there's several reasons for that. We've kind of touched on that. So the state funding formula, we currently get a bump every other year. So we get a base cost increase in the first year of the biennium. And I've got a, a slide that will visualize that, so it's easier to understand. But that is contributing to our flatline revenue. The next piece that contributes to that is our enrollment decline. And we have a, matter of fact, the next slide will go into that. And the last thing is, again, we've already touched on it, we've got some really good questions tonight, the property tax effect on school funding. And as we've touched on, as property taxes increase, the state says, oh, you don't need as much money, we're going to give you less. And they have factored all of that in, into the, the many factors that are the fair school funding formula. And then, as we can see, the, the yellow line here, we're looking at almost seven percent increase over the forecast period. We all know that the thing, things cost more today than they did last year, and things are probably going to cost more next year than they cost this year. And we've accounted for those things very specifically in our assumptions, so. The largest piece for our, our fair school funding is not property tax, it's enrollment. And we are in a declining enrollment situation currently. So if you look at 2025, we are projected to end the year at around eighty-three hundred and fifty students. And that's something that we talk about every single Monday morning. I run a report. We share with executive cabinet what that looks like, what that means, what do we think future enrollments are going to be? So we actually had an uptick in enrollment this year, which is fantastic for us. We had a, a strong kindergarten class come in at about six ninety, where we are projecting throughout the forecast period about a six hundred and sixty kindergarten class. Now, if we keep getting these six nineties roll through, this is going to look dramatically different. But right now, based on average class sizes, if you, if you look at the class sizes, if you take a three-year average, a five-year average, or a seven-year average, right now, that all comes out to about six hundred and sixty kids. So that's how we're projecting that moving forward.
And also, remind me what year it was that Ed Choice came in?
I think it's, it's been out there for a while, but it's really hit home the last, the last couple years, and I think it was in twenty-one, maybe?
So is some of that decline?
Twenty or twenty-one that it really started to, to increase, yeah.
So is some of that decline based on that?
Well, that, the decline really is a difference in how we are funded. So you see a major drop between twenty and twenty-one.
Yes.
Twenty-one's where the, when the fair school funding
Okay.
started. And so we used to get funded based on how many Hamilton kids there were, even if there were some in Fairfield and some in Middletown. And we would get revenues for that, and then they would do transfers on the back end. So what they did with the fair school funding, it's, you get funded on whoever's in the seats. So it's, it's a different methodology, comes out to be about the same. But when you look at enrollment, we were still getting credit for kids elsewhere, but it, it was getting taken back from us on the back end.
Okay.
I think the biggest thing with enrollment that you see also, the huge decline is, and this happened nationally, we lost kids during COVID. I don't know where they went, I can't explain it.
That's scary.
Anyone that you talk to cannot explain it, but kids just suddenly went off the books everywhere. And we lost a significant number of students during that period of time, and we have not completely recovered from that.
What? Scary.
Yeah.
Jeremy, going back, I'm, I'm, I'm still not, I would like more clarification, I guess. With the kids going out on, on Ed Choice right now, what, how many students do we have out, and is that?
Unfortunately, we don't know.
We don't?
We, we don't have that data. We're not, we can't see it.
We don't even know if they were here in the, I hate to say here in the first place, where, how many kids have?
I mean, we, we would have a record of if we had a student, but we wouldn't necessarily have a record of if they're participating in Ed Choice and went to a parochial school.
Yeah, I remember, they changed that. They used to give us that data, but we don't get it anymore.
The first, the first year we had the data
Yep.
because it was a direct line item on our expenditures.
Yeah.
They took that away and also took away our ability to see the information.
Okay.
So if someone asks us, we really have no idea how many of our students are in Ed Choice.
No.
Okay.
We could probably get enrollment numbers on how many students are enrolled in other schools, but whether or not they're taking the voucher and that, we would have no idea.
Yeah.
We just simply can't see the data. So we, we expect that to bottom out around 2028. Like I said, if, if we get a couple strong kindergarten enrollments where we're expecting six sixty, and we get a seven hundred, that's really going to make a, a big difference. So that's the information that we know now. And we've, Cabinet has done a fantastic job. Our, our numbers this year, we, we've done some things in the past that has allowed us to retain some students, whereas before we were not. I mean, for example, before the fair school funding formula, we were on the cap. It didn't matter if students were here or not. We, we were capped at what we were going to get, and we were going to get our two percent or three percent every year, no matter what. Now we get funded, it changes literally every two weeks when we get a payment. So we, we monitor that extremely, extremely closely.
I think one of the challenges that we have with, with, with looking at that last slide is that that is spread all over the, the district. It's not, we can't just say, well, we've lost one hundred and fifty kids at second grade, so we can, we can staff accordingly. It's, it's all over the, it's all over the district. It's all the
Well, that, that is a total district number.
You have a bulge coming through, but I'm, I'm sorry.
Correct. That, that's a total district number.
Yeah.
But we do have by grade where the cohorts are coming through, and, and that's how we monitor that. That's like I said, you've got, if you take a three, a five, or a seven-year average, there might be six hundred in this grade and seven hundred in this one, to give you an average of six fifty. And, and those averages look, look about like six sixty.
But it's, it's hard to, to adjust those on a yearly basis based on the kids coming through, although it sounds like we've got a
Well, and that's something that we do.
We've got a bulge going through, we're going to have a bulge going through here.
Jeremy, if I, if I may, just speaking to that, so we, we analyze staffing throughout the year, every, every week, every month. And what I will say is, going back to my student service days, most of our elementaries, when I was working in that position, it was four teachers in kindergarten, four teachers in first grade, four teachers in second grade. We've, we've right-sized those numbers because of the declining enrollment. So you can look at any one of our elementary schools right now, and there might be three grades of three teachers, there might be four grades of four teachers, and it might be four-three, 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 four-three. So that's why we're seeing a lot of staffing shifts in the spring, because if we have four teachers in first grade and three teachers in second grade, the next year, we're probably going to need three teachers to move up, and then four teachers to move up. So there might be one person who's going to have to shift grade levels from, you know, kindergarten to first grade, or first grade to second grade. So we, we kind of know that going in, and the principals know that going in, so they're already preempting those conversations and talking about, okay, what kind of staffing shifts are we going to have to make based on our numbers? Because, like I said, it used to be pretty much four-four-four-four-four across the board, and none of our, none of our buildings, very few of our buildings look like that anymore.
And we, and we've been able to do those staffing shifts without job loss. And, and, and yes, we've placed some people into positions that, that may not have been their favorite, but that was our, our goal with doing those things. I think that's really an important factor. I think another nuance with
Excuse me, just a second. Mrs. Matthews, I know you talked to me earlier, so please, you're excused. Thank you. Sorry about that, Mike.
That's okay. I think another nuance, and I'll call it a nuance, I'll call it this, it's a flaw in the funding formula, is the fact that if we have a student withdrawal at any point during the year, we lose the entire funding for the, entire year for that student. So if I have a student that we educated from August through March, and they withdraw at the end of March and go someplace else, we lose the entire amount of funding for that student for the entire year. Now, conversely, if we have a student that enrolls with us in March, we get the funding for the entire year as well. But the trend is that we would lose money on that deal with, with, with the way that you look at our projections.
Yeah, very, very good questions. And Lauren, that's something that, when we talk about enrollments, we bring up that staffing sheet and look what that looks like for, for the staff as, as we move forward.
I guess my, my point was that you just, just because you see a hundred fewer students doesn't mean, automatically means we have to cut, we're
No, absolutely not. Because it may be one student
Yeah.
in every building in, in a particular grade, yeah.
That's, and I guess, but I, I do appreciate, because I think people have to understand how fine-tuned we are as a district when it comes to staffing at these different grade levels. Because over the years, we've done it different ways. So I'm, I'm really glad that you guys are on topic.
Yeah, and then I'm glad that's not something that I necessarily have to, to do. Andrea, Mike and Mike take care of that, because that, it can be a real mind boggler, let me tell you.
But it does, it does, we are, we are always looking forward in that, making shifts where those shifts are needed.
Absolutely.
Instead of, instead of doing
When you had to look at that a little with, less of a, you had to look at that a little differently when we were on the cap as opposed to now.
Yes.
And it's a really, it's a week-to-week thing. And if you want to get into the weeds on it, you can get really bad numbers, where your class size is large, but it's not large enough necessarily to employ another teacher, but you're right on that cusp. But if now I employ another teacher, that class size becomes extremely small. And, and so there's a lot of nuance involved with, with, with all of that. But a hundred, if we lost a hundred kids, we've got eight elementaries, two middle schools, and a high school. You know, a hundred kids could be, you know, ten per building. And, and within each building, it could be one at first grade, one at second grade, or it could be all ten at fourth grade. And so just the pure numbers doesn't, doesn't give you the nuance that you need to make the decision.
I, I guess what I'm saying too is, is it just proves how much, how strategic the district has been and the administration's been looking forward on, on how that happens.
Do you want to commend Mr. Wright for the work
Yes.
that he does in the fall as well? We've already met to look at, what do the numbers say, starting to look at that early?
Yeah.
That's something, he does a nice job in his department of getting out early to figure out if there are positions we have to fill, if there are moves that have to happen, so that we're not scrambling in June and July. That is too late to make changes. And so he does a really nice job of getting out early. We usually start those staffing meetings with principals, what, Mike, February?
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're ready to go early February because we know what a domino that creates in a building. We want to lower the anxiety for our teachers as well. We're not moving teachers unless we have to. And understand, it really is based on those needs at this point. You know, we've had some massive shifts in years before. Now it is those section cuts from a four to a three and a three to a four. Many of the times, it's kind of a yo-yo as that, as that class progresses through an elementary or a middle school. So we, we really try to be on top of that, because we understand every single student matters.
And I, and I understand, from the teacher's point of view, how difficult, difficult it is moving grade levels. I know how dramatic that can be for some teachers, and I do applaud the teachers for doing doing that, but it's, it's one of those parts of business that, and I hate to call it business, but part of the educational landscape that we're in right now, we don't have the luxury of saying, you can have a smaller class size this year. We, we've got to balance those things out. So I appreciate the teachers when they, when they're faced with those types of things. And it's hard on the principals too, so.
Sorry, Mr. Fraser, we keep.
No, great, great questions. Great, great questions. So we've talked about enrollment as a factor for flatline revenues. Let's talk about the funding formula as a factor for flatline revenues. So in current law, there is an increase in base cost, and we are assuming that that's going to continue in the first year of the biennium, but then a 0% increase in base cost. So base cost is, how much does it cost to educate children? And if the cost goes up 6%, theoretically, the funding formula would allow a 6% increase in revenue. Right now, that's, that's not the law. That's something that we're pushing for, but that's not the law. So what does that mean? That means in year one of the biennium, we get a, you know, 2%, 3%, 4% increase, but then in year two, we get zero. And you can see what that looks like on this slide. It, it illustrates that, I think, really nice. This is a new slide that, that we've got. We're in year two, we've got declining enrollment. We're, we're actually getting less dollars than we were the prior year via the formula. So I, I think this slide does a really nice job of illustrating that point and how the formula works and how the increases in base cost work. And this is a new slide as well. I've got a couple of new slides here. I just thought this was interesting and, and kind of tells a good story. So it costs Hamilton City Schools about $77 a day to educate a student. And we can see on that pie chart that we get 85% of that, those dollars, from state and federal sources. So of the 77, state and federal sources account for about $65.50, and local taxpayers account for $11.50. I just thought that was a, a very interesting slide to see how that. Now, not all districts are this way. Like, we are, we are about the mirror opposite of Lakota. So theirs would look very different. But just, just an interesting slide. So this is a graphical representation of the corresponding cash balance when we look at those flatline revenues and increasing expenditures. So you see a dark line there and you see a dotted line there. So the dotted line represents the story we told in the May forecast. The dark line represents this forecast. So we're, we're saying the same things as we were in the May forecast. The story has not changed. However, you'll, you'll notice an uptick in the dark line over the, the dotted line. That comes with increased enrollment projections, mainly that, that large class in kindergarten coming through. And then we were projecting classes of 650. We, we are now projecting classes of 660. And then also, we received a, a large Medicaid reimbursement check at the end of June last year. So that, that's what's due to the uptick. And then our final slide, again, I, I think this, it's a new slide, but I think this helps tell the story as well. This is called Days of Cash on Hand. And this is something that, that school districts look at. It's kind of a uniform measure of how much cash you have versus how much money you're spending. So what that means is if we did not get any more revenue, how long could we operate? So in 2025, we're looking at 164 days or five and a half months. And the state has a threshold of where they don't like to see you go below, and that's somewhere between 30 and 60 days is what the state puts out. So we're, we're there except for all the way out on the forecast in that 2029. So that, that's really, that tells the story of what's going on with the cash balance. We've talked about the, the assumptions, revenue and expense. So that's my last slide, and I'd love to take any, any further questions that you have. I know we've talked quite a bit tonight, but if you have anything else, I'd, I'd love to be able to answer those for you.
Jeremy, I just want to thank you for putting this together. When I hear horror stories, like you and I were talking about yesterday, horror stories of.
Yeah.
That, that are happening in other districts. Let me back up real fast. One of the things people have to realize is that we do not get rich because our property values go up. And we've talked about that at even doing any levies too, doing a, you know, because whatever we get, it, it pulls it away from, by the state level.
Correct.
So people have to understand that we're just not getting rich because we're paying, which just shifts the financial burden back to the community. But I'm just glad that as a district, we continue, and I know that Mr. Holbrook and I'm sure Mrs. Blevins will be doing the same. We've made strategic adjustments along the way to, so we don't have to in the year 2028 say, oh, we got to do something about it now. We do something about it in 2024 or 25, so we, we can push that, that whole scenario out and keep the funding issues that other districts face at bay.
Correct, correct.
And I, I appreciate you bringing that to us as we strategize on how are we going to deal with that in the future.
Okay. There are no more questions? Again, yes, thank you, Mr. Fraser, for your report and keeping, keeping us on task as far as fiscal responsibility. Mrs. Blevins?
The next item on the agenda is, as you know, at our organizational meeting in January, we have to approve the board meeting dates for the calendar year 2025, which is interesting because it runs, you know, half of one school year and half of the other. What you have in front of you is a draft. All I did was roll forward the exact same dates and times from the meetings we just had during calendar 2024. What I'd ask is if each board member would take a look at these, bring back any adjustments, or if there's any dates that will not work, to make sure that we have a quorum or more. And then we will revisit this at our board retreat on December 17th to finalize, so then we can do a vote on this during our organizational meeting.
Sounds good. Questions? Okay. Well, the work session, I believe that's the end of the work session agenda, so we can just go ahead and jump right into the business meeting if you're okay with that. So I declare the work session closed, and then I guess we need to have a, a call to order for the business meeting. Mr. Fraser?
Mrs. Baker?
Here.
Dr. Kopus?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next, I need an approval for the board agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague. Need a second?
I second.
Thank you, Dr. Kopus. Any discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Fraser?
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Also, you received the minutes from our previous meeting. I need a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague.
I second.
Thank you, Dr. Kopus.
You and I take turns tonight, Joe.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Mr. Fraser. Threw me off there.
Sorry, ma'am. Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. I don't see anybody from city council. I don't see any public participation. Mr. Holbrook?
Thank you, President Baker. Tonight, I want to focus my comments on our extracurricular activities, most specifically at the high school. I, I want to congratulate all our fall sport athletes on, on a great fall season. But I want to focus my comments tonight really on our fine arts programming, because there is many things going on with, with that, and I want to make sure that people are, realize some of the great things that we have going on. Our inharmonics team traveled last Saturday to Kettering for an all-day performance and workshop, and very few are chosen to do that. And this is the second year in a row that that group has been able to perform. And, and just being chosen to perform speaks volumes to the quality of programming that we have with that. Wilson, Wilson's choir and our high school orchestra have been asked to perform again at Hamilton's German Christmas Market this year. Our Garfield band director has been asked to speak at the Ohio Collegiate Music Education Association Conference. And, you know, our marching band earned a superior rating at the state, you know, this past weekend, and our Big Blue Company had a successful production of Almost Maine this past weekend. And so you can see, it, it's, it's a variety of different genres within that fine arts programming, but, you know, ju, just the scope of programming that we have available for kids i, is something that I think is understated. And, and I think it's something that we, we need to continue to promote all of our extracurriculars, because we really truly do have something for pretty much everyone as far as an interest. And so I wanted to take tonight and highlight some of those things, because I, I think that a lot of times, they go unnoticed, and th, those are really significant pieces that, that I think need to be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Holbrook. Okay, next is, is the, under professional development, which was an item we had on the last agenda in the work session, and it's now coming up for approval. So I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague?
I will second.
Thank you, Dr. Kopus. Any discussion?
I do have one comment. A, a thank you to either Mr. Holbrook or Mrs. Blevins, whoever put that biographical data together on the guest speaker, that was excellent. So whoever is responsible for that, thank you.
That was Mrs. Sprague.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, motion is second. We need the roll call.
Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. Okay, next is the consent agenda. Oh.
Human resources.
Skip human resources. Okay, next is human resources. I need a motion, I went across it. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you, Dr. Kopus. Any discussion? Mr. Fraser?
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
Now we have the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Fraser?
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
Next, we have the finance agenda.
Thank you, President Baker. We only have a couple items this evening. We have the treasurer's report. We also have the approval for the financial forecast FY '25 through '29, and we have one donation from Brown Dawson Flick Funeral Home for $250. And those are my items.
I need a motion to approve.
Joe, you want this one?
Yeah. Joe, go ahead.
What's the correct response?
I, I'll make a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Fraser?
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Okay. That's it. Our next meeting is Thursday, December 12th at 4:00 PM here at the board office. I think that ends this meeting. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you.